We're pleased to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. Let the minutes show that all members of the council are present, and the council member, Steve Vincent, will be in charge of our opening ceremony today. Councilman?
If you would just stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the minutes of April 10th for our consideration. Move to accept the minutes of April 10th?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. We come to item six this evening, which is our comment period. We have three individuals who have signed up to speak to us tonight. And when I call your name, if you can come up to the microphone, and it looks like you've already signed in your address, so you don't need to repeat that, just tell us your name, and then you have up to five minutes. And in your comments, you're addressing myself as the mayor and the council, and it's not really a back-and-forth, give-and-take time necessarily, although if you bring up a specific concern, we do try at least pointing in the right direction. And we do appreciate hearing from people. The first one is Ted Sterling? Is that right?
Yes, I'm the owner of Adams Towne, and I have an employee that moved into West Valley City, and ordinance enforcement has given him a courtesy notice to can't park his truck. And we're on 24-hour call for police calls or breakdowns or whatever. I was wondering, she said to go to the city council and see if we could get, you know, something to do where he can take his truck home. They had some complaints on oil and stuff, and I've got pictures, but I don't think the oil was out of ours, and the house north of his I know wasn't out of ours. But we're just trying to, you know, make it work. We didn't realize this, he probably wouldn't have moved into West Valley, but we need to get, you know, something where he can work. Otherwise, I've got to find another employee that is honest, to get compliments on him and that, but I've got to have somebody that can hit the calls in the middle of the night.
And just so we understand, sir, that they're saying that he can't park his tow truck on the side of the road?
They're saying, she's even saying in the driveway, because it's a commercial vehicle.
Okay. Mr. Pyle, any suggestions or recommendations for Mr. Sterling, and where to go from here?
We've already had the discussion, Mayor. We've explored, I understand, a number of different staff people who had the discussion with the gentleman, and we really don't have a suggestion as far as the actual ordinance itself or the creation. I mean, obviously, what you can do is park a vehicle in another place, maybe get a ride, I mean, that's what you do with semi-truck trailers, for example. I'm not myself completely aware of the specific instances, because the staff members have been handling that, but it is basically a question of size, commercial definition of the vehicle, that's done more by class and weight sizes, size and class weight, as opposed to the fact that it's simply a commercial vehicle. There are, for example, some tow trucks that you can have in a residential zone, but they're more along the lines of a normal pickup truck, two axles, less than 12,000 pounds, for example. But in this particular instance, all I can do is recommend him to work further with our staff, see if there's some other solution they can come to.
Who on the staff have you worked with so far?
It's Jenny Harwood, I think.
In the code enforcement division, right?
Code enforcement, yes.
Anybody from PD?
From where?
Police.
No.
Okay. Which makes sense, because if it's parked in the driveway, then that's right, it would be the code enforcement folks.
Oh, public service over here, and I says, I know there's a lot of them out here, you know, which, we don't do West Valley City's police work, but we do tow for dealers in West Valley. And, you know, we'd like to remit you, we want to be good neighbors, but, you know, he also needs to work. And he was parking on the street, so we didn't realize that. He's willing to put it in his driveway, and what oil was, by his, he's only been there like a month and a half, but what oil was on there, they cleaned up as soon as they got that courtesy notice, you know, whether it be out of our truck or something else.
Now, there are places, of course, within the city that you can go to contract, for example, being able to park your vehicle. The main concern here is we're talking about a residential.
Yeah, so you recommend we put a church parking lot or the gravel parking lot on 4100, but I've got a $1,000 truck, I can't sit there and have somebody vandalize it.
Right, right.
We're not the most popular sometimes, and we don't do the PPIs, we just do police impounds and dealer work, but, you know, there's a lot of them out there that do the parking lot enforcement, and...
So, wait, is there anyone in a different department that'd be better to kind of get creative with them, or are we kind of just...
I mean, this is where...
Unless we, as policymakers, choose to change the policy.
As the gentleman pointed out...
If you give it a chance, even, it'd help.
It's not really a police question, because it's on private property, and it's not really a public works or business licensing, that's not really the issue. But parking is the situation, and so it really is a code enforcement, kind of a discussion.
And your code enforcement has been very polite and nice on the phone. She's the one that said go to the city council, says they'll make it.
Well, I'm open if others of my colleagues are to putting on a future study session the topic of what vehicles we allow in a driveway or not, and if nothing else, it'd be better for us to understand what our rules are, and if they don't make sense, we ought to tweak them, and if they do make sense, we ought to at least understand them better and the wheres and whys behind it.
And we can certainly do that from a presentation standpoint, and with all sympathy to the gentleman's situation here, you also, I think, know or made aware that when this question, or one similar to it, within the last little while came up, I went and asked my staff, okay, give me the reasoning as to why our ordinance is the way it is right now, and pretty much unanimously, all of them said, these are the various reasons we do it, and we definitely don't recommend that you change any ordinance. But that doesn't preclude the idea or the possible benefit to the council just making a presentation as to why we do it, so certainly we can do that.
Even if it's a five or 10-minute one, I think it'd just be helpful to understand that the whys and wheres for those rules, and if they, for some reason, warrant some tweaking, we ought to look at, are my colleagues, would anyone else like to hear a presentation like that?
I'd be happy to hear what the rules are and the reasoning behind them, of course.
Yeah, that's what my... Okay, thank you. We'll do that, and if we can let Ted or others who might be interested know what that presentation is, then those are public meetings, and of course, you're welcome to come and listen and learn alongside with us.
Well, I appreciate your time. Hopefully I can get this worked out, so I don't have to fight somebody else, because employees are hard to find.
Well, no promises. Normally when we get into these, we find that there's some reasons why things are on the books, but we're at least willing to look at it.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's all we can ask. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, Tom Green?
I'm the driver for Adams. And like I said, when I moved in, landlord said nothing about, you know, my tow truck can't be there. And I parked it, you know, which I thought was off to the side, not blocking any gates or anything, you know. And like you said, the oil, I cleaned up, because there was a little bit of hydraulic oil, which of course is going to come out. But I can get a patch of, if they ask to put in my driveway, my landlord's already okayed it, I parked my truck on. But I was just trying to be courteous and not block in my upstairs neighbors. But they told me as long as they, because it's a circular driveway, as long as they can get in and out, they're fine. I got enough room to pull it up, so it's not blocking the sidewalk. It's completely up on the private property. You know, plus with not being able to work at nights, it's kept my, you know, checks bad. You know, for two weeks, my paycheck was $288. It's hard to live on, hard to pay rent. And I'm in a contract with my lease for six months. So if you just give me like a trial or something, like at least bring my truck home, so I can work. That's pretty much, you know, I've talked to my neighbors across the street, I told them if the wreckers there, if they need me to move it, don't tell me, I've got no issues. If I'm, if the wreckers there, of course, I'm there, and I'll move it. My neighbor to the south of me asked me one day, you know, to block his gate, I said, okay, fine, I'll move it, just a second went in, grabbed my lunch out of the bag, out the door, and I was gone in five minutes. Other than that, that's the only thing I've ever heard. But usually when I back up, I'm not blocking his gate, he can get a light open. Just that one day, there was a car parked where I normally are, so I had to head of him, second one, I didn't grab my lunch. But other than that, I simply complained, I know of, and tell the code enforcement, we got the notice. And I took care of everything by the 16th, when they said everything was cleaned up, you know, the truck wasn't there that Monday morning, and I have a bid back since. Except I pull up, grab my lunch, I'm gone again. Other than that, that's about it. I don't know what else to say.
Okay. Well, thank you. You had some good additional information, and we fill for you with your point, and we'll take a look and see if the rules still make sense like they did when they were originally put in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Winifred Wilson?
Before I launch into my dive drive about animal control, I want to ask a question. The street from me, I live in a cul-de-sac on Kildare Circle, right off of Dublin Drive in Westshire. And as I was coming here tonight, right in the middle of the road, from 2564 to 2604, were signs, better than sandwich board signs, that said, slow children at play, right smack dab in the middle of the road. I don't believe those are allowed according to traffic ordinance. Those are private signs. The neighborhood signs that say slow children and say are the ones that the city puts out that are there. I would like to know if I can have a police officer go there and remove those signs, if in fact they are illegal. And if the people can't watch their own kids and tell their children to watch out for traffic and not ride their bikes in the street and come barreling out of their driveways, which they do in my neighborhood, that's not my problem. But to me, those signs are creating a traffic hazard as opposed to trying to protect the children from what they want.
Okay. Mr. Pyle, did you get that address, or do you want to repeat that?
Yeah, if you get the address for me, but ma'am, yes, I mean, the short answer is yes, you can call police, those are not signs that are supposed to be in the middle of the road.
I didn't think they were, but I didn't want to get in a contest with my neighbors about it. But they're right in the middle of the road.
And do you want her to call the police, or we better just have her repeat the address, and we can handle it?
Yeah, we can take the address.
Okay, it's 2564 Dublin Drive to 2604 Dublin Drive. And there are kids that are probably five, six, seven. I know I rode my bicycle in the street when I was at age two, but we were taught to pay attention to traffic, to get out of the road, and it just, I'm already fired up for my animal control, but that just really ticked me off.
Wow, but that, we appreciate you reporting that, and feel free to dive in your other issue.
I mean, I know I voted for this man right here, and I remember voting for you, so I never miss an election, so you guys are talking to, I lived in West Valley now for 21 years.
Well, we're here to serve you, so...
Well, I hope so, because I'm moving to Las Vegas next year. But anyway, animal control. I won't bore the council with this whole letter, but basically, my concern, my battle has been with a woman that lives across the street, who is a polygamous wife, who has about eight or nine kids living there, but throughout, three years ago, she brought home three kittens. They were not licensed, they were not sterilized, they were not vaccinated. I subsequently ended up with the little orange one in my yard one day, and I put him in a cat carrier, and I am a cat owner and dog owner, used to be, I've had to put them all down, because they've gotten old. And I brought him to the animal shelter, I gave the animal control officer, it was a very nice lady that I talked to, the information of where the house was, who the resident was, where they came from, the phone number, and they put the cat in the shelter. I know she was contacted, because the little boy came over to my house that night and says, my mommy wants you to give me money to get my kitten out of the shelter. And I thought, that's pretty arrogant, in my opinion. Subsequently, the shelter had to put the cat down, because it had some severe problems. I stood right here about a year ago or less, giving you guys the same information on this woman. The cats have now grown, and they've had kittens. One of my neighbors called to find out about having a trap put in her yard. She was told that she would have to pay $50. I don't think that's right. What are my taxpayer dollars for? Animal control, when they've had the residents identified, where the cats are. A fellow resident in that neighborhood that knows those cats are there should not have to pay to have those cats trapped and picked up by animal control. So in my letter, I printed off the West Valley City Municipal Code Title 23, Animal Control, that to me, when I read it, when animal control is given specific information, they have the authority to go to that home, knock on the door, say it's been reported to us that you have cats, check your database, because I sure license my cats every year, and see if she's listed there as owning cats. That's grounds to me for at least something akin to a traffic ticket when you're speeding. And then if she refuses to do that, then I think that's enough grounds to physically go in her property, her backyard, because those animals are running at large. According to the code, everybody is supposed to have a license on their pet, it's supposed to have a collar with that tag, it's supposed to be current. If the kittens are over four months old, that's when the owner is supposed to license them. They can't get licensed without at least being vaccinated. The animals are causing a nuisance, because they're coming in all our yards, and they are defecating in our yards, which is part of the code also. So I've done my homework, but I think what I'm really irked about is people seem to think dogs and cats are different. But the West Valley City Code is very clear on dogs, cats, ferrets, pigs, you name it, of what you can and cannot have and own, and how it has to be licensed. And I'm tired of it. I can't feed birds in my yard anymore, because the cats come over and kill birds. My next-door neighbor, Geneva Wilkins, who I mentioned in here, the cats would come over and they would pee and defecate on their lawn furniture. They had to quit feeding the birds. They would tear up their garden, they would sleep there, they even delivered a litter of kittens there. So I don't know what more it's going to take after tonight to get animal control to do something, unless we're all wet in our understanding of the city code.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and providing your information.
Want another copy?
Sure, if you have another copy, that way we'll...
Here's the address, it's on the back of those things.
We'll make sure our city recorder has a copy for our records, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We come to item seven tonight, which is considering ordinance number 12-15. Mr. Pyle, if you'd like to introduce that one to us, please, and then I'll open a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. After the 2010 census was completed, there obviously was changes in the demographic data, including population numbers and other things that are associated with that. And as part of our general plan, we like to, or we rely on the recommendations of our general plan, to include data that comes from that census. So therefore, we're bringing before you right now an ordinance that would amend our general plan in a way that would include the changed data that has come to us from the 2010 census.
Okay, thank you. I now open the public hearing regarding ordinance 12-15. Is there anyone here who's come to speak on that matter? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing and turn over to the council for their consideration.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 12-15. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and some seconds. Any discussion of 12-15? All in favor of approval, say aye.
We...
Oh?
Okay, it is 12-15, excuse me.
Yes. All in favor of approval of 12-15, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We have some resolutions to consider tonight. Mr. Pyle, 12-51, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would allow adoption of a tentative budget for the new fiscal year that'll end June 30th of next year, so it'll start July 1. This is the first formal step in that process. Each year, we adopt a tentative budget, and then we adopt a tax rate as it's submitted to us by the county, and then we do or do not make any other changes, which I'm proposing there will be changes further to this tentative budget, but not in a substantive amount. That formal and final adoption is scheduled to take place in August, but the tentative adoption is tonight. Just to give you a little bit of quick information, this year's general fund budget is roughly $1 billion, proposed more than it was last year. Last year was about 63.6 million, this year is proposed at 64.6. Most of that, two-thirds or more of that $1 billion change is retirement benefit mandates from the state, as they've reformed the retirement system that has lent more cost to be borne on the city side of the ledger. The general fund, however, is not the only budget. There are a number of other enterprise and other type budgets, which then bring our total city budget up to around $100 million. But the general fund is where most of the main activity in the city occurs from, so therefore, it's usually the fund where most of the attention and our question is about.
Okay, thank you. We received this last week, and I've had a week to read through and consider it. Are there any questions from the council at this time, or motions to be made?
I had a couple of questions. One is, although it is slightly from last year's budget, I do notice it's down over $10 million from the '09, '20, '10 budget, so it's, we've actually shrunk our city budget 14% in those three years.
It's not really an operational change. You'll notice if you look at, for example, '09, '10, and '11, all of those are roughly around that number. Usually what that reflects is one-time projects that are either of a construction, a capital construction type of nature, maybe some bond proceeds flowing in or out of the budget. The operational level that you see there at the proposed 64.6, 63.6 last year, has been fairly flat since '08, roughly.
Another item to look at is, when we talk about property tax revenue, it looks like there's not any increase proposed for this year.
No.
Although if one were to just glance at the revenue statement, they may think there's a slight 2.3%, but my understanding is that's all the judgment levy.
It would include judgment levy as we capture that, but that's not a large amount of that. Mostly what that'll reflect is actual projected growth in the city for the upcoming year.
Okay, so that's...
New property that would be...
So that'd be new property, so the actual property tax rate really isn't moving at all, won't be significantly different now.
Okay.
Okay, so a year of no tax increases is always a good thing. Any other questions or motions?
I did just want to note that the property tax shows an increase of under half a million dollars, where the projected sales tax is one and a half million dollars. And I'm glad to see that going up with the projects that have been created here in the city, and also the hopeful turnaround of the economy.
Yes, that is definitely true, and we have even in this year, as Councilman Buehler pointed out, we had budgeted last year, or the current year we're in, $18.1 million in sales tax. Our actual projected on that now is going to be closer to about $19 million, and then, of course, we're even projecting a little bit of increase on that for the next year. So we're definitely seeing some economic recovery. One interesting note is that even if the 19.6, that's still, if you were to look back a number of years that aren't reflected in here, that puts us at actually about a 2000, if I remember right, five or six level, in terms of what we were collecting in sales tax in the previous decade.
So, just like property tax, the rate's not changing, but we do anticipate some growth this year.
Yeah, that's right.
Good. We'll take, we'll take good news and growth, right? Any other questions or things that caught your eye, or a motion?
I'll move for approval of resolution 12-51.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the tentative budget, so that the staff can begin working towards our final budget. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 12-52, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. This resolution would allow us to award a contract for construction of two of the new roads in the Fairborn Station project, and they will be named Way Station Road, Three Mill Lane, and Market Street, a section of which will also be reconstructed. We'll state named Market Street. There are different, excuse me, sources of this funding, Stormwater Utilities, Class C, UTA will be contributing some money to this. We also will be shifting part of the money from our capital improvement project, I mean, fund to fund this project.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone with a motion or discussion on 12-52?
Mayor, I move approval of resolution 12-52.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes. Let's look at 12-53, Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is also concerned, or concerning the Fairborn Station project. As we build new buildings and do new construction in there, we need to provide new power infrastructure for that, and this will allow a contract between ourselves and Rocky Mountain Power to provide new power infrastructure to Fairborn Station.
Okay, great. Any discussions or motion on that one?
Motion to approve for the resolution 12-53.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes. Council, are there any other motions that need to be made tonight?
Mayor, can I add a comment and a procedural motion on, last week, we had several items come through, and many of them were zone change and general plan updates, and I was very proud of how our council, our city council handled those items. One of them was a little more difficult than the others or most, and we had good thoughtful conversation about the application GPZ 2-2012. And I understand from the staff that the applicants that have met with the staff, and based on the feedback that they've received from the city council, would be ready to amend a couple of those items and be ready at a soon date to bring them back to the city council for future consideration. So with that being said, I would like to make the motion that we reconsider two of the items from application GPZ 2-2012, including ordinance 12-14 and resolution 12-48, to be reconsidered at our May 22 regular city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to reconsider those two items. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on reconsidering those items?
Just a question.
We're not approving those items today, we're just, should they even be allowed to come back?
Just a question, would they be ready by the May 15th for our study session to be able to review those plans?
I don't, as we've had discussion with Mr. Gus and Mr. Rasmussen, I don't foresee any difficulty in them being able to bring those through the 15th. We can check with them and make sure, but I think they probably would be able to.
Because I would like to see it in at least a study session before the regular meeting.
Yes, I think that's, that'd be appropriate, given the potential changes from the original.
Yeah, and with that, I mean, I think they'd indicated in staff they'd be ready sooner than that, but I think with the complexity and importance of this piece, that we give it sideways through on an extra week there of the 20 seconds.
Okay. Any further discussion to reconsidering those items? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of reconsidering those items on May 22nd, say aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose? Okay, well, let them come back to us, and we'll see what they bring. Any other items tonight? And no need for executive session, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir.
Okay, and we come to item 10, which is to adjourn. And for the sake of our visitors, we adjourn the city council meeting, but we have a couple of other brief meetings wearing the various hats that we do. So we adjourn the city council meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency, and note that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call, and all are present. First item of business is the approval of minutes for April 3rd and April 10th.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the April 3rd, 2012 regular meeting, and the April 10th, 2012 special regular meeting.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Communications, report in chief executive officer.
Don't have any, sir, thank you.
And we have one resolution, 12-08.
Thank you, sir. So this is adoption in the redevelopment agency of the tentative budget... So this is adoption in the redevelopment agency of the tentative budget as was considered in the previous meeting for other city budgets. Now, there is one difference between this budget, the housing authority, and the building authority that you're going to be considering in the next two short meetings, and that is whereas the, the, the city budget, which we will adopt in August after consideration of the truth and taxation hearing, the judgment levy, and all of those considerations happens at that time because we're holding the truth and taxation hearing, and we don't conduct the same process for these three budgets, mostly because frankly, we're not, there's no judgment levy to be recaptured, at least in any kind of significant amount, and we're not proposing or even considering any kind of property tax increase of a necessitated truth and taxation hearing. So therefore, those final budgets will be adopted in June. I just thought it'd make that no difference in case anybody wonders in June when these ones come back and the other one isn't.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pyle. Any discussion or questions from the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 1208.
A second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 1208. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The vote is unanimous. Any other business, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, we will adjourn the redevelopment agency.
Hey, I called to order the West Valley City Housing Authority and know all members are present, and we've had an opening ceremony. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the April 3 regular meeting minutes.
I move for approval of the April 3 regular meeting minutes.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any communications or report tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Will you please introduce our lone resolution, then?
Yes, you bet. So this is also a tentative adoption or proposed tentative adoption of the budget for the housing authority for the new fiscal year.
Okay. Board members, is there any questions of the submitted budget? If not, a motion would be in order then.
I would move that we adopt the tentative budget for the following fiscal year.
Second?
Okay. All in favor of adopting the tentative budget and all of the things contained in resolution 1204? Any discussion of that motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved, and no other business, and this body will stand adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Municipal Building Authority. Note that we have had an opening ceremony, all members of the body are present. We have before us the minutes of February 7, 2012, annual meeting.
Motion to approve a minutes, February 7, 2012, annual, annual meeting.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Appears to have been unanimous. Mr. Pyle, any communications or report of the Chief Executive Officer?
No, sir, thanks.
And we have it before us, resolution 12-01, our first resolution, would you please introduce that?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is also the tentative budget for the building authority, also to be considered for the next fiscal year, 2013.
Any discussion or questions regarding the resolution 12-01? Anybody like to make a motion?
I will make said motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Not all in favor of approving resolution 12-01, please say aye.
Aye.
That also appears to have passed unanimously. Next item on our agenda is to adjourn. This body stands adjourned.